I'm gonna go ahead and call tonight's regular school board meeting from Monday, April 25th. To order, please rise for a moment of silence followed by the pledge of allegiance. Any changes? I know we have a comment card board members on eight point zero five, so we're gonna pull eight point zero five for discussion. Are there any other changes additions additions to be made superintendent? Okay, so approval of minutes superintendent.
I recommend approval of the minutes from the regular school board meeting, April 11th, 2022. An executive session for IT security purposes, April 11th, 2022.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Perfect. Okay, we're on our representation, so I believe we have representatives here from Umatilla Middle School. I would like to go ahead and invite you guys forward. I'm not sure of the order of the presentation, but we're excited to have some students here and figure out what you guys would do.
Good evening and thank you for allowing us to share with you. My name is Tiffany Sheckler. I'm a mental health liaison at Umatilla Middle School. And I facilitate SWAT club meetings at Umatilla. We have two students here with us, Mary Bella Thains and Trevon Shell. I wanna make sure I pronounce that right. And Miss McDonald, Sarah McDonald from CivCom. So tonight, we're gonna go over what SWAT is and the students will map.
SWAT stands for Students Working Against Tobacco. This Florida statewide youth organization to mobilize, educate, and equip Florida youth to revolt against and de-glamorize big tobacco. SWAT is a united movement and empowered youth working toward a tobacco-free future. During the 2021 and 2022 year school or school year, Umatilla Middle School has hosted the first SWAT club in Lake County School, in Lake County. Umatilla Middle School has served as a pilot program and has consistently had nine to twelve students in every weekly meeting.
UMS SWAT youth have developed goals for their upcoming 22 to 20 through 23 school year. They are to increase SWAT clubs, help foster a safer environment to talk about vaping, increase education on vaping and its impact on the body and on families, and to conduct outreach along with local municipalities to advocate for smoking-free parks and beaches. Garnering this school board support would allow our Lake County SWAT youth to move forward with fortitude and assurance to increase their school and community exposure and activities. Therefore, making a larger impact among their peers, family, and neighbors in the 22 through 23 school year. Thank you for this time to allow us to share with you and the wonderful things our UMS SWAT youth are doing. And with your support, we hope to continue this work in additional schools next year.
Thank you. You were handed some folders and in there is our newsletter that we did and some activities that we had with the students this year.
Very well done.
Yes, that's awesome. Thank you both of you for coming and thank you, Mrs. Sheckler, for leading this organization as well. We've got some community partners that have come and taken advantage of it as well. And your proud principal was here in the audience to support you as well. So we are super excited. This board loves to see our students and so thank you for bringing them forward to talk about what SWAT has been doing. Thank you. Next, I believe Ms. Pearson is coming up for our proclamation on Mental Health Awareness Month. Follow up.
Good evening and Dr. Burns, I'm pleased to bring before you this proclamation to consider signing. Mental Health Awareness Month is May 2022. Whereas mental health is essential to everyone's overall health and wellbeing and whereas all Americans face challenges in life that can bring impact, that can impact their mental health, especially during a pandemic. And whereas prevention is an effective way to reduce the burden of mental health conditions and whereas there are practical tools that all people can use to improve their mental health and increase resiliency. And whereas mental health conditions are real and prevalent in our nation and whereas with effective treatment, those individuals with mental health conditions can recover and lead full, productive lives. And whereas each business, school, government agency, healthcare provider, organization, and citizen share the burden of mental health problems and has a responsibility to promote mental health wellness and support prevention and treatment efforts. Now therefore be resolved that the school board of Lake County does hereby proclaim May 2022 as Mental Health Awareness Month in all the public schools of Lake County and call upon school administrators, teachers, students, and citizens of Lake County to commit to increase awareness and understanding of mental health, the steps our citizens can take to protect their mental health and the need for appropriate and accessible services for all people with mental health conditions. Thank you so much.
Well done.
Yes, I recommend that you adopt the proclamation of Mental Health Awareness Month of May 2022.
Second.
Public input portion of our meeting, I have first Ms. Cronin.
Good evening superintendent and board members. I'm glad to be standing here tonight, knowing that we're looking at a different avenue to help our custodians out. You know, last time I was here, I talked about having an in-house sub-list. We have a lot of employees that don't work during the summer. They are already out looking for jobs to work during the summer. Bus drivers will be bidding on jobs the second week in May for summer work. I'm not really sure how much summer work they're gonna have this year. But we lose a lot of employees because during the summer, they go find a different job to make ends meet and they end up liking that job and staying there. You know, if we're that short of custodial, I think, you know, whether we have the sublists up and ready by then or we, you know, hire some custodians for the summer to help with, you know, with the crews that are shorthanded. You know, I know that the fifteen dollar an hour, whenever that gets signed and we can say it's gonna happen. I know that will help with custodial staff. Not sure it's gonna help with much other, but I think that's gonna help with the custodial staff. And I think that maybe offering some open positions for summer work may help your cafeteria workers, bus drivers and monitors, and even custodians that don't work eight hours a day. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Cronin. Okay, next we have Dinco Bryant.
I saw some of you double checking the agenda. No, I am not giving a report tonight. Good evening, board member superintendent. So I know I wear a lot of hats, but tonight I'm here as private citizen Dinco, as I like to call him. And I want to say to Ms. Burns, thank you so much for your service over these past six years. I know that tonight is your last meeting and I just want to say thank you and good luck as you move forward.
Thank you. That was very kind of you.
That was very kind of you, yes. Okay, I believe we are on the attorney report, Mr. Johnson.
Yes ma'am, we have been discussing the changes in the adoption of the new fifteen-year charter contracts with Mineola Mascot and Spring Creek. And we would, with your permission, like to put them on the next regular board meeting agenda for approval. Okay, we'll do that. And just so you know, there were two other charters as well that came up in this cycle for amendment, Lake Tech and Ali, and both of those will probably be in a position to be put on the agenda in three or four weeks.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right, we're on the consent agenda.
All right, I recommend approval of consent agenda items eight point oh one to eight point oh four and nine point oh one to ten point oh eight.
Board members.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye, any opposed? Great. So we'll come back to eight point oh five and Mr. Yocum will pick us off.
Good luck to you, Kristy. I hope that you enjoy your repass and not having to get emails from me among other people. As I believe I sent emails to a number of you about this issue of eight point oh five edgenuity review. And I just was looking at that and it's four hundred and five thousand dollars to renew a software contract for software where there really wasn't a lot. And I know it's come up before. You probably all know exactly what it does, but not everybody out there does. And it didn't really explain what it was for and why we should renew it for four hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. Then I started thinking, I just recently bought another truck. I got rid of my old green Jeep. And so nobody recognizes me anymore. And I went through a lot of research to determine the model that I wanted and then which where to find, because it was a used vehicle that I was buying. And then I looked at this and I said, you know, do you guys ever review online reviews of the software that you're buying for hundreds of thousands of dollars? So I just went out and I just typed in edgenuity review. And there was two major ones. I think I included a link to one and it listed the other one. And both of them showed that edgenuity had about two point five out of five. And then if you search on edgenuity alternatives, you'll find articles that'll list ten or fifteen alternatives to edgenuity. And then questions like, why does everybody hate edgenuity? Now I realize that from something I read is that maybe some of the issues are that you had to use it during COVID and that maybe it wasn't designed to do all the things that people liked. And so maybe that's what part of this was. But then the question is, perhaps your purchasing process and your renewal process should include a mandatory review of online reviews of software. Because I know right where I can go to review business software and you'll find hundreds of people posting reviews about their use of it and everything else. And I would suspect that maybe Education Week or some other places have reviews of the products that you're buying. And I think that you ought to look at that. The purchasing department should look at that. The academics department should look at that. And I sent a copy of this to them too, because I didn't want to be accused of not letting them know. The, and just look at that before you make these decisions to either buy or to renew software. Because now there's a lot of stuff out there and you can go through and you can weed out, you know, the BS or the pro-sales hype. But after listening to that, I wonder whether there was really good salesmen that sold you guys edgenuity or you got in early, whatever it was, and then they didn't keep up with their standards. And of course, I hope that I get some comments to explain the other side of the story. Thanks.
So with the other side of the story, Mr. Weeks, I know is gonna speak to it and then Ms. Pearson, if you have any, if there's any other questions about the academic, the intervention use of it, she's happy to provide some information as well.
I can confess that the edgenuity salesman is not that good, actually, to be honest with you. So I'll go ahead and go there first. So I think one thing that we can look at whenever we look at a software, let's look at the intent and then let's look at some metrics that I think matter, maybe a little bit more than online reviews. Because online reviews have people who have different needs. It's not that the reviews themselves are bad. It's just that people are using things for different products. So edgenuity right now, in the beginning of the pandemic, kinda got its claim to fame in the fact that in that one quarter, that last quarter, that we used it as a way to continue some form of education and instruction during almost untenable time. However, in the year passed, that's not really what it was for. It was more to address learning loss. And specifically, what we were concerned about is kids that may have fallen behind. And so on the next slide, I've got a couple of statistics for this year. And I know it says a quick story and coming from me, I know that sometimes it's a shock, but it will actually be relatively quick because I think this metric does say a lot that the review necessarily doesn't. So right now, in the 21-22 school year, eighteen hundred and sixty-three courses have already been completed. And this is over a gamut of middle schools and high schools. And so you have to think about that. That translates into students that were behind in their program of study or their progression. And so this was an attempt to, and relatively dramatically, catch them up. Six hundred and eighty-nine, one thing that edgenuity does is it will go ahead and project whether you're on course to finish for this year. And of course, we just have a little bit of a snippet of the end of the year right now. But right now, if those metrics were to make, that would be an additional six hundred and eighty-nine courses. So what we did is we look at two thousand five hundred and fifty-two courses. Now, obviously graduation and the learning loss could have affected very several grades. But right now, this year, we would be looking at our seniors, right? And the seniors, there are one thousand and fifty courses that were completed by seniors for this school year specifically. So these are students without this alternative may not have been able to, may not have been able to graduate. Now, I will say this, there are other options, however, there are not a whole lot of other options that the state of Florida will allow you to substitute for credit recovery. One of the options, a vendor, which I prefer just not to name, we went away from and went to edgenuity and Lake Virtual. So that's probably the other big one. The other one is possibly sending our kids to Florida Virtual. However, we ran a quick calculation. If we just looked at approximately with some recalibration, what that would look like, it would be about a million dollars if they all went to Florida Virtual instead. So I think even though the metrics on the online piece, I think some of there is a little bit of a swirl potentially of, you know, a lot of districts, whenever they rolled out in response to the pandemic, I know we had a couple of challenges, but we really did roll out relatively smoothly. So I think there's some language about that. And then I think there's also potentially some people, I saw some language about homeschool, that would be difficult. We have a whole machine of rostering and single sign-on that helps with that. And so I didn't know if Ms. Pearson wanted to speak to the instructional pieces. I think there's a part there as well.
Mr. Weeks has pretty much covered everything with his slide. I do know that if we did not have this option, we would be leaving a lot of students behind. It does provide an option and alternative for students to recover, of course, to be able to make, forgive a grade. And without that, we may not have the teachers that for all of these courses to be able to work one-on-one with students. So this does give an opportunity for those students to get that option. And also, in some cases, is the teacher for that particular course dependent upon where students might be in alternative placements or DJJ facilities, but still under our care. So hopefully that has answered any additional questions. Oh, and it's also, as he said, it's approved. So we can only use approved courses from the state of Florida. This is one of the companies.
We'd like to speak about the process for just half a second, though. One thing that I think is important is that the bill actually came down from five hundred and something thousand dollars last year. We are constantly reviewing and trying to use usage reports and things like that to guide. We've cut some core systems where there are modules we weren't using and this is a situation where we nipped and tuck, where we didn't find the courses to be as effective or so. We tried to adjust. And so that review process does happen internal and we do include stakeholders. We just don't have a formal process. Those tend to be a little bureaucratic sometimes.
I just wanna make a comment. Mr. Yocum, I appreciate you sending the email to district as well as to the school board because it gave us an opportunity in full transparency to show why we are doing what we do. So thank you very much for that and I appreciate the presentation.
So I've got a question, I guess, on the other side. So quantity, certainly it's there, right? And I see a lot of students are taking advantage of this. We're seeing a lot of course completions. What about the quality of instruction? Have we looked at that? I mean, does this lead to successful results? That there's an EOC in a course that a student is taking or, I guess I just kinda go back to some of that pandemic time and what the, I mean, right, we as parents got to see what our kids were doing in online programs and I felt like some of it was left to be desired.
Yeah. So I think as the IT guy, that's probably not something that I've delved into terribly much. However, the one thing I would kind of address for a second is that I don't know what the other mechanism would potentially look like in this mass of credit recovery. And the reason why I say that is that, you know, this offers a very deep, basically, course catalog to a large extent. But we would not necessarily have a certified teacher to be able to have this coverage of this spread at every, every school. And so, don't get me wrong, I think it's one of those things where that correlation would be interesting to some extent. I don't know what the other tool to repair the amount of damage that may have been done to students lacking credits would be. So I think that would be something we would look at. I will say this, is that this is being used out of ESAR funding to fund again. I think we're evaluating and at the point, this doesn't necessarily maybe make sense or is able to be downsized more. I think you will see it contract. We do run summer school through it, which Ms. Pearson can probably speak to. And right now, the reason why I went ahead and brought the renewal to you, because I thought it was pretty essential, is we did not want to get into a time where we were gonna miss the payment for summer school because middle school and high schools depend on it because of the coverage, the certification issue.
I think to answer your question too, Mr. Dodd, it is meant to be a support for intervention. And so in distance learning, yes, we had a lot of students that accessed some of this material and it kinda served as their core to get us through that last nine weeks when we had to shut down. But that is not its intention. So usually, the students that are on this or students have already been in front of a teacher. And so this is their second time seeing that content and getting the reinforcement. So it's very different from when we use it for the distance learning, where some students may have struggled a little bit because it was their first round of accessing material without necessarily all the full support. So the way we use it in this way is very different than the distance learning model.
I guess I just kinda, and I never really given that much thought to this until it was brought up. But, you know, it's interesting, I guess, as we look at, let's say, math or ELA or social, you know, any of these subjects, we go through a sense of textbook adoption process, right, where we review other materials and teachers then go out and look at this and vote on it and then we send one out for public review and so on and so forth. But here we've got twenty-five hundred courses that were taken through this program. We have no idea what's in there for content. And there are other options available on the state-approved list, haven't been vetted against this. So is this the best option? I don't know.
So I kinda do probably have a little bit of feedback on that and the fact that in our research, one of the things that we found is fifty out of the sixty-seven districts use it, including almost every district surrounding us. So don't get me wrong, I'm not saying that that's necessarily the answer to like a correlation type question. But we're in the boat with a lot of folks, including Orange. Marion actually used their competitor and they're actually going to edgenuity this year. So the momentum does seem to be on their side for an adoption. I think this is the first year we've used it like this. So when these assessment scores come back, it's definitely something we can look at. We don't have that data, really, we don't really have that data terribly much from this year because I think this is the first massive credit recovery.
So if you're a parent and you wanna take a look at the curriculum or the content of this, is that possible? Is this considered instructional material that somebody can review and look at? I mean, I guess now, based on some of the information that we've seen come out of the state regarding the math books and some examples that have come out there, we have no idea if there's CRT or SEL and any of that stuff. What does that look like? How do we find that out?
It is state-approved, like, for the credit recovery. But the question will be whatever review process they went through in math, I would imagine they'd be subjecting that, this type of resource to as well.
Eventually.
Yeah.
But this has not gone through that kind of extensive review.
No, I think the first, I think the tip of the spear was basically the math.
It's not, it's not an adopted material. It's used for intervention. So our core materials are adopted.
Right. I, right, I get that. I just think it's kinda funny that here, we've got twenty-five hundred courses that were done here. I have no idea what the content is. Neither does the parent. The teachers in our school district probably don't know unless they've clicked through every single module, which they probably haven't. It's just a lot of unknowns in this, in terms of content, right?
It is standards-based and standards-aligned. So it would be aligned to the standards that the students have to have to be able to master the content of the program.
But that's what every math book publisher said too.
I hear what you're saying. I'm trying to answer you with regards to the qualifications of the program to be approved by the state. So it is standards-based and standard-aligned. It would not be a substitute that we could use to provide a credit if we did not have that approval from the state with regards to it. Content, yes. I think eventually programs like that will probably be as well opened up for review.
Yeah. I just have no idea what the kids are reading about. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, board? Thank you very much, both of you for being available, answering your questions. So superintendent, do you have a recommendation?
Do. I recommend approval of eight point oh five renewal of edgenuity.
Aye.
Second.
Is there any further discussion, board? All those in favor? Aye, any opposed? Great, thank you. So we don't have any discussion other than that piece tonight, so we are on the superintendent's report.
All right, just a few updates and reminders. Monday, May 2nd, this is coming Monday, starting at five thirty, actually, it starts at six, but the doors open at five thirty. If you have not seen our incubator EDU program, I know some of you have been a part of that and I think Dunn, actually, I think Mr. Mathias actually sat through some presentations. And, but this is an opportunity for our students to compete in a Shark Tank-like event. So these students have created some, some new, as you would call them, inventions and discoveries that they have to address real-world problems. And they'll be presenting these business ideas to successful business leaders in our community for a chance to win cash prizes. Potential investors will also be present and could offer to buy into one of the new ventures. So if you want to see some incredible thinking and presentations by our students, that's Monday night, May 2nd. You come, might be something you wanna invest in.
Where is it?
It is at Taveries High School, May 2nd, Monday, five thirty to eight. Also, this Wednesday is our Alumni Hall of Fame luncheon, so I think you have that on your calendar. It is sponsored by the Education Foundation and wanna thank them for being such a great partner in this endeavor. And congratulations to our inductees. If you saw Super Sunday recently, we highlighted our four inductees. And that was, I think, last Sunday. And also, remember that Teacher Pre-A appreciation week kicks off on Monday as well, May 2nd. So it's a great opportunity to celebrate all of our teachers and to let them know how thankful we are for the great job that they do for our children every day. Also, since our last meeting, we learned that Stacia Warner, Assistant Principal at Beverly Shores Elementary, is one of three finalists for the 2022 Florida Assistant Principal of the Year Award. So congratulations to her. Very proud of her. And then I think I had two letters of condolence. First of all, letters were sent to the father, Ken Lyford, who's our mental health specialist and mother-in-law of Melissa Lyford, Director of VSE. Ken's father, Joe Lyford, passed away. And then Ryan Gibbons is a teacher at Eustace Middle School and he lost his father, John, to die today? I'm not sure how to pronounce that. I'm sorry about, I'm sure I didn't say that one correctly. And then lastly, I too, Dinco, kinda kicked us off tonight. It is Dr. Burns' last meeting with us. And I just want you to know how grateful I am and honored to have worked alongside you these past several years. We've been through some interesting times together and some challenges, for sure. And you will be missed. Your leadership will be missed. And we just have a small token of our appreciation that I want to give to the best of luck. It's heavy, so hold it on the bottom. I wish you all the best and again, thank you.
Thank you, superintendent. Mr. Mathias?
Just a couple of things, because tonight actually is Dr. Burns' night. So I wanna, I just wanna mention that a tradition that you had started, the Donuts Dads and Me, Donuts Dads, mentors and me, was held at Beverly Shores. Mathias Food Service had sponsored that. They had three hundred and eighty-seven dads and their kids show up. It was amazing. The administrator did it off the charts, putting it together in the way it was orchestrated. So everyone at Beverly Shores should be proud and everyone I know enjoyed it. And that's to your credit, something that you started. So now that I wanna switch personally, Dr. Burns, we have, we've had a few years together. And what I honestly can say is that Dr. Burns has always, from her heart, voted, always from her heart advocated. And for that, I am grateful. So I wish you all the best. That's it.
Thank you. Ms. Cronin?
Well, I just wanna compliment the students from Umatilla Middle. You did an excellent job in your presentation and we're very happy. And I think I can say we'd be very happy to support your endeavors. Also, along Mental Health Month, I had the pleasure of being at Taveries High School, I believe it was last week. And they recognized their ambassadors for mental health. And that was a wonderful celebration that was put on by the school district in conjunction with the sponsors and certainly Dr. Burns. My time with you has been limited, but what I can say to you is I actually remember you as a cheerleader in high school. So I have a long history and I have yearbooks and pictures. But what I would say to you is the thing, the thing that I admire and respect a lot about you is that you're always true to yourself, you're true to your convictions. And I think that's very important. I think especially in the times we live in with the political things that we face, it's always good at the end of the day to be able to go home and believe in what you did. So I congratulate you on terms well done. We will miss you, but certainly it is with much respect that we bid you goodbye.
Thank you very much.
I was actually gonna let you go last.
Okay. You're taking notes.
Mr. Dodd.
Two things. So the first was, actually, I was kind of reminiscing about a conversation we had around the dinner table last night when Mr. Yocum was talking about reviews and things of the sorts. And so
And so I I can tell you, you know, sometimes I'll I'll ask Siri to give me directions to a school to give me a good ETA. And when you do directions by Siri, she'll always tell you how many stars that business has. You know, you can always tell if a student was suspended from that school, because that's that school has one star on Yelp. You know, and that was probably some angry student who had not liked some some sequences. So I guess you can't put all your faith in in the reviews. But but anyway, I digress. The so so my kids were asking to have a review system for my cooking. And I thought, okay, is it really that bad? They're like, no, 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 this it's, the problem is that you get so many differing opinions. Five kids, I can't please them all. I was like, okay, so so you take a meal, four kids will love it, one kid won't. Well, what does that do to my rating? You know, I feel like I'll never get an accurate rating on this. So no, the review system is no good. And they said, well, you think we could do that for school lunches? And I go, well, well, I guess once again, you'll you'll end up with with some reviews all over the board. But I I almost recalled, I thought, when we had implemented that that new menu system or software that had their ability to, for students to rate the the meals. Does this sound familiar at all? I felt like we, I felt like we had that component. And I wondered if we if we if we then started gathering that sort of data, if students would then start to kind of drive the demand for what does our menu look like for the month? You know, we'd see, oh, these these five dishes are the most popular. We should make sure that those are in, you know, the greatest rotation. These two are never going to be past half a star, so so let's cut those from the list. Yeah, I I don't know, I thought maybe it might kind of kind of drive some of that. Yeah, all right, thanks. You know, I said, you know, to a kid, I was like, you could, you can make a million bucks right here. You know, you could start your own Facebook of school lunches, you know? And kids scan a QR code and go, anyway, it'd be better if we if we controlled it. And and so that was one topic. The other one was, I know that, I don't know, the rest of you have been getting as many questions. I have about seeing the news from the state on math textbooks and things of the sort. But you and I talked about maybe the possibility of sharing where we are in the district or. Oh, perfect, that's, well timed, thank you.
All right, yes, I'm sure you all have heard about the state releasing the adoption list for the math instructional materials bit. So just a little background on that. Once that list is released, publishers have twenty-one days to appeal that decision to be included on the list. And that's typical, it has happened every every year. Unfortunately, the state releases that list after April first, which is often after the districts have gone through that process. And that's been the same each year as well. So in our process after adoption, we're in that thirty-day period after the board approval, allowing the public additional time after you say yes, this is the adopt book we're going to adopt, before we're able to purchase. And that closes April twenty-eighth for us. So where we are with our books that did not make the list at this point, we're in constant communication with the publishers and they all have assured us that they're going forth with that appeal process. So that that means I get the details from the reviewers and what needs to be submitted in order for them to be included on that list. And they are committed to doing that. And I think some have even gone all the way through it and submitted that documentation or are back waiting from the state again on that. So they're updating us regularly, keeping us informed of where they are in the process. In the meantime, we are working on contingency plans. My team is meeting and planning forth. We're collaborating with other districts to see what their options are and what they're hearing from their, from the publishers as well. And then we are kind of trying to think through every scenario and what we might need to do when we get to that timeframe. I want to remind you that we kind of, we're a little ahead of the game this year from where we've been in some years past. Most of our core consumable orders have already been placed and our shipments should be starting soon to the schools for the ones that are just a repurchase for the year, with the exception of K-five, ELA and Spanish consumables that we're still working on. Other than that, those have already been placed and are in process to be delivered. So that makes, that gives us a little time to stop and remember that this is a five-year adoption. So we want to, we want to take all this information and we want to make sure that we are making a decision that's right for our students and our teachers and like, and make sure that we have the materials that they need in order to be successful. So that's kind of where we are. I don't know if you have any questions about that, if anybody does.
No, I'd just like to thank you for the hard work of you and your staff. I know that's a lot and so I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Scottcraft.
I thought, I know, I know when you had announced your impending resignation, I had some initial thoughts that night and just thanking you for your service. And I thought, wow, what a great perspective you have been with this board. And and you know, that's one of the benefits of this board is the diversity of opinions. And then we all come from different walks of life and bring a different strength to the table. And I think this is a board that is 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 great because because of that. And you've been a part of of making that greatness and so I'll be sad to see you go.
Thank you.
Wish you the best. Hopefully, I'm not on Facebook all that often, but maybe you'll post an update now. We can check in and see how you're doing. And all the crazy cats you might be fostering or raising or.
Kids want to move on to dogs.
That's that's a much better choice.
Thank you, Mr. Dodd. I also wanted to just thank Mrs. Scheckler and the SWAT students from Umatilla Middle School for being here this evening. Like I mentioned before, we just love it when you guys are here. We know that the work they're doing is very important. I think that vaping is probably one of the biggest concerns that we have among adolescents and teenagers today. And so the work is is well worth it and we definitely have our support to continue advocacy for for change in that arena. So thank you for being here. I think it was a great introduction to our Mental Health Awareness Month. I think the county's doing some amazing things in that work. And it was really nice to highlight you as a as an example of some of the things that are happening. So thank you for making the trip out here. I know the the group is much bigger, but as you pointed out, they can't drive yet. So they're kind of at the mercy of their parents. So thank you guys for bringing them here tonight. We really appreciate having them. I'd love an update next year, because you've set some pretty good goals. So we'd like to see you back in that regard as well. I also wanted to make this note about Dr. Burns, but I can't not thank Mr. Carr and his staff. The Utesis High School softball team had their opening night on the new ball field. And it is amazing, the ball field is just, it's it's a great place to be. The parking is no longer an issue at all. There's no angry neighbors anywhere. The bathrooms work, there was no flood, there were so many things that were amazing that evening. The the band came to support the girls the next game and played throughout the entire game. I didn't get to go, but my mother was texting me pictures all night and videos of the band that was there to support the girls. And it's just going to be a great place. We host districts next week, so Wednesday night and Friday night, five and seven o'clock. You'll be able to come and see some district ball. And I'm gonna just make a prediction that you might see these ladies here again with the state championship. So if you want to see some good ball, come see some good ball being played. And I'm gonna let you finish the night, but not before I just, I mean, I don't think I can say anything that they haven't said. My feelings are exactly the same. I've really enjoyed serving with you. I'm excited to see the next advocacy route that you take, Dr. Burns, because we all know how powerful your leadership can be. And so we appreciate your time on this board. And and I I'm gonna say, this is Cunningham said beautifully, is that you you definitely have been true to yourself. And we appreciate that. That's, not everybody can say that, that serves in a government position. So we respect and appreciate your leadership. So if you want to close it, when you're finished, I'll hit the gavel and we'll go.
It was kind of hard coming up with something to say. So I kind of thought of doing a, where have we been? Where do I start? And I did want to bring up, this was a funny year for me, because my, when we came back here to live, my eldest was in third and now my twins are in third. And and when we started, we started with recess. And so I thought I would just start with that. And working that, like, we worked for two years. In the first year, I was on the board, we were finishing the recess law. And I've been able to see how that recess law is, it changes those children's lives. And it it has personally affected my son, not so much my, we have a twin girl and a twin boy. But that active boy will tell you that, like, he needs recess so bad. He'll, if if there's not a recess day, he comes home and says they took all the fun out of school. And 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 so it taught me the importance of that advocacy work. And and that changing that law really did make a difference for our children. And I wanted to point out also, in the first year, we began, and when I first came, we we got the lobbyist and we started our CTE programs at Leesburg High. And those programs, with the help of every single one of you, have been built out so much through this county that we have programs at every single high school now. I think at one point we had them, because my dad was a vocational teacher back in the day. But we brought so many vocational programs back. And I'm very proud of that work that the board did. And then finally, I wanted to mention the work that this board worked very hard for very many years to stabilize the budget and to make sure all of our reserves were ready so that we could build and we could have new schools in the South End and hopefully more improvements in the North End. And I think that that work was really, well, really important. And it really took a lot of unity from every single one of us to have the discipline to hold steady on that decision and where you build and what you do in the future is, like, I'll look forward to looking forward to that. I wanted to thank Bill. Personally, you always have reminded me of my dad, I think you meant, I know, I know you know my dad. And I know how much you two love great deals. And I I do love how you go after those deals and get them. And well, we have a long history with your family too. But I think the depth of experience that you bring to this board has been helpful and the history that you can bring is so, it's remarkable. And I think that you've been a very valuable addition to the board. Mark, I've always been impressed at how hard you work and how how you always do your homework. And and I notice, because I do it too. And and I I'm always very impressed by that and that you're always there for your constituents. And Stephanie, I think your leadership this year has blossomed. And I think that you've really brought the board together this year. And 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 I think that your leadership and your style of leadership is very colloquial. And I I just, I think you, I think you're doing a lovely job. So I guess that's all I had to say. I really wanted to thank my constituents and I wanted to thank all of my supporters and all of the staff and the superintendent. So thank you very much and it's been a wonderful ride.
I was told to remind you guys, we have a workshop at nine-thirty on Monday.